Good evening. This is Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. The ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not, screen share on your computer. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members on the, uh, members of the Planning Board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
And Tom Sanford is here. With the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-four P M. Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is an open me- open meeting of the Planning Board be being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific if, specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each member, each speaker on the agenda. After concluding my remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comment, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers. Please remember to mute your telephone or your computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes, minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait till you yield the floor to state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to apologize for not obeying the rules you established for the whole meetings.
That I establish for holding meetings?
Yeah, I, I feel like I just talk whenever the hell I want and I don't wait.
If it was important or if it was a big deal, I would bring you back in. I try to keep people on a short leash.
It's Carolyn's fault.
Always. Of course. Yeah, I'm trouble.
Okay, speaking of which, we have no objections to the minutes, so I'll ask you to vote to accept them. Carol McDonald, Ms. Charles. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. May I have another motion to permit the Chair of the Planning Board to write a letter of support to, uh, CMR PC for the work that they're going to do on I forget what we were supposed to do.
So you, you sent a one, well, you will be sending a wonderful letter.
I will be.
You will be, and it's in regard to a D L T A project on ADUs, which we and a number of other towns will participate in, but they're structuring an effort to help us all write a compliant ADU bylaw that, um, tweaks a little bit here and there to meet up with some of the expectations that we might have that'd be peculiar to Berlin, so.
Do we pay them for that or is that free?
It's D L T A, so District Local Technical Assistance is a sum of money that the state gives to the, the regional planning agencies. And in our case, for Southern Worcester County, we get about two hundred and sixty-five thousand or so, and then the commission has to match it, so it's about two hundred and ninety-five thousand that's in the pot. And then, what happens is staff and, and communities propose projects to utilize the funding. And so tomorrow. Tomorrow night or, no, Thursday night, the committee I chair reviews the, we have seventeen proposals. One of which is, um, a sum of money, I think she's asking for fifteen thousand to help with the ten or a dozen towns that are wanting to participate. Um, and, and we'll
Oh, so it's fifteen thousand dollars spread across, it's a thousand dollars per town or?
Um, yeah, I mean, essentially, I mean, it's gonna be a chunk to understand exactly what the model is that the state's gonna create, which they're close to doing now, and then then they'll generate something that's fairly generic, and then they'll work individually with the towns, which is where the incremental sum comes in, and I mean, it's not gonna take a hell of a lot of.
We're getting offered a lot of help from a lot of different angles on this.
Yeah, I mean, everybody is out there saying they're able to, to assist, so I think what the commission would be willing to do is to, you know, evaluate some of the other guidance we've got from other sources and help draft something that then we can take to town meeting.
Cause you guys look at the draft I wrote, right?
Yeah, so it doesn't cost us anything. All the money comes out of, um, D L T A, so it's sort of a no-brainer. So what Tom has to do is author a letter that says we agree to, um, participate. And so I'm, I move that we do that.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Have the Chair write a lovely letter following the guidelines.
I'm sure it'll be wonderful.
And lovely.
It, it was.
We, what is the motion? Tell me what to write.
Um, that we, we.
A letter of support.
Support the Chair writing a letter of commitment is technically what it is to Central Mass Regional Planning for D L T A project on ADUs. Talk about acronyms, huh?
Okay.
Specifically, the ADU bylaw.
Yeah, so it was interesting. This morning I got the packet of the projects and actually, it came last night, but this morning, as I was opening it, I was looking at letters of, of, uh, you know, agreement that people would participate from the multiple projects, and the one from Berlin seemed to have arrived about twenty-five minutes before I opened up the document. Nice job.
We aim to please. It will get done. It's gotta get slotted in.
I think, I think we still have to vote.
Yes.
All right, so, what'd you say?
We still have to vote.
Yes, I was gonna call for the vote right now.
Just making sure.
Yep. Um, so I'll ask for your vote. Uh, Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And the Chair, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Excellent. Is there any other business, Mr. Jay, that we need to address?
Well, Tim promised he would get the mail out of the mailbox. So I don't know about that. Actually, I was gonna put a, I was gonna do what you said, put a key there, and I've been doing it for like two weeks, and I still haven't done it yet. But we did get, uh, one email from Peg that says, I know there's been a lot of talk about ADU. I wasn't sure if you were taking questions tonight, or if it was just an update. If you're taking questions, she gave me a list of five questions that we can look at maybe when we get to the ADU part.
Great.
Okay, well, we can, we can address those when we do the ADU discussion.
And then, I also got an introduction from Peter Hoffman, too. Jason Pelatish, Executive Director of the four ninety-five slash Metro West Partnership. Hmm, anybody ever hear that?
So they've been in existence a long time. And, and they represent that whole string of towns. I don't know how far north they go. They go way down Bellingham, probably that way. North, I don't know how far they go. Um, and they've always made an effort to try to represent communities in, in sort of a balanced way with some of the players that are trying to develop in the region to try to help. I think they're more directed toward economic development.
Well, yeah, I think that's why they contacted Peter, but Peter said I'd like to introduce you to the Planning Board.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be worthwhile putting them on the agenda sometime and see if they wanna just chat with us about the types of things they're working on. I mean, they've, they've worked on infrastructure issues. And I think, you know, they've always been concerned about transportation and access and power and um, you know, there's a whole series of issues that impact the all the commercials, industrial sector, so I think they've tried to be the the interface between communities and industry, so.
All right, so I'll try to.
Good group.
Get him to come just talk to us next time or.
Yeah, I.
It may not be next time, cause we, we gotta we gotta make sure we get all this stuff ready for.
Yeah, even in March or April or something, you know.
Yeah. That's the, all the news.
Okay. Excellent. Yeah, we're right on schedule. So, let's take up the, uh, Highland Commons Mall sign. We're getting, uh, the paper store and we're getting another store, huh? Paper store surprises me. Cause they have a big store, don't they, up in Hudson?
They're closing that one, I believe.
Closing that one?
Yeah.
Oh, huh.
I think they're moving.
That's what I was wondering. I mean, this would be, I would think this would be a good spot for them.
Oh, yeah, I do too. But the space that they got, they're going to go into in Highland Commons is probably half the size of the space that they have over in Hudson.
Would, uh, have you been in a paper store recently? They don't actually sell.
No.
Like cards and books and.
I went there to buy a paper once and they don't have it.
No.
They don't have it, no.
They have a little bit of stationery, maybe.
Yeah, they have one little small thing of.
Table.
But that's about it.
Yep, exactly. So it doesn't surprise, I, I bet the rent over there um, for the size space they are, if they're gonna spend that money, be at Highland Commons.
True.
Yep, and then pliables, I'm so excited.
What's that?
Um, so, first time I had what they, what they sell is in Puerto Rico on the beach, so it's frozen acai berry. Like, it's almost like a pu- a puddingy slush kinda. It looks like pudding, but it's kinda like a slush. And then put berries and granola and stuff on it. Yeah, it's quite yummy. I haven't, I've had it once, not on the beach, and it wasn't exactly the same experience, but.
No doubt.
But it's still yummy and I, you know, wish them well.
Where are they, they talking about over by Mullyas and Jersey Mikes and stuff?
They're the one in the.
The, the paper store is going on down the way from, uh, Five Below and.
I think where Eddie Bauer was.
Oh, okay, in there.
Yeah.
For the, uh, the Poké Balls or whatever they are?
Oh, right, J, there's a J Crew coming too, a J Crew outlet. Oh, that's going in the fabric store. The fabric store is gone. Which doesn't surprise me, cause they were like never open when people aren't working. Um, I tried to go in there several times just to see what it was about, but they were always closed. Uh, yeah, so there's a J Crew outlet going in there. And I think the paper store is going where Eddie Bauer was, but I don't really, I don't know where the pliables is going.
It's gonna go next to Jersey Mikes on the end.
Oh, is it open? On the end end, on the glass walls? Isn't that the golf place?
No, I think the golf is second to last, isn't it?
Yeah, there is an extra store at the very end.
Right.
They were using it as their off, field offices.
And, and there's a sign, there's a temporary sign right around there.
The golf place was hopping the other night.
Oh, my gosh. I didn't know they had a bar in there.
Oh.
It was.
Yeah.
Busy, busy.
And is that a, like you play golf or you buy stuff?
You, you practice.
I think it's all golf simula- simulators, yeah.
Yeah, but there were, there were a bunch of them, you know, people are having a good time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that mall's gonna contribute a lot to obesity in the surrounding region with key plays. Now they're putting in Chick-fil-A and the pliables.
Yeah, one more.
Go work it off.
Yeah, right?
How did we, we didn't ever even got offered to have the Chick-fil-A in our, in our pad?
We won't let a drive-through.
Right.
Almost, almost surely.
Think how much money that's gonna generate for Hudson.
Yeah, think of how much trash it's gonna generate on Gates Pond Road.
I don't know.
Oh, what? I have McDonald's trash. I, I could, come, come see my trash. Can you tell exactly where?
Nearby, you think?
Oh, yeah.
Hudson.
Really? Cause we get, stuff we get is all, you know, nip bottles and.
You don't get Dunkin' Donuts?
A little bit.
Oh, I get Dunkin' Donuts and beer cans.
Yeah, and I get.
Soon as they leave the package store, it takes them about this long to consume and then all along the wall.
Yep, I get.
Fast food, but from, from places that aren't anywhere near here.
I move we accept the sign package from, uh.
I did look at it, reviewed it. It does look like it complies.
Yeah. Whichever one, who is it, this one?
Paper store and, uh, Poké Balls.
Playables.
Oh, were they both in the package I sent you? I didn't realize there was two of them.
Yeah.
I move we accept them.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. One thing I do will, I will note is they create a little letter that you can fill out and send right over to the um, building inspector saying that we voted and then we accepted and everything else, and it's signed by Ronald Wheeler, uh, Ronald Veruska.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
That was in the package?
Huh? It's in the package, yeah.
Uh, so should I add that and send it to, um, Richard?
So, I just thought that was funny.
Yeah. Wow.
So are you, so is it, um, a standard one that Ron created years ago?
I think it was created by, uh, Benderson. Those guys.
Okay.
He's been in the same package, but, uh, I just assumed that they would have taken Ron's name off by now, but maybe they're not aware.
Right. Yeah, cause they haven't been to a meeting since you've been Chair, have they?
Yeah, they have. There was one guy that came when we were having, when there was difficulty with, we didn't approve the sign. They wanted to put it in. I forget what store it was. Um, and then, and then I think he just called in. Um, the second time was when we were discussing the illumination on the backside of the golf place. So it was twice that, that he's been, uh, um, you know, at least said hello.
Involved, yeah.
Yeah.
Did, speaking of the building inspector and Highland Commons, though, have we talked to them about the sun, the lights behind the, like, behind Emerson and on that end?
I talked to him about it this week. He said that, uh, he was waiting if we, we need to send him a letter or something to get him to go enforce it. Cause the, there, the wall packs that are up there aren't the right kind, which is why the light's going in the wrong direction, right?
Right.
Right.
Didn't, did someone write a letter that? I don't think I was at the meeting. Did somebody write a letter to give to him?
No, we, we, I had sent an email to him telling him that we agreed about the golf sign. And I mentioned in that email about, we thought that the lighting on the backside was out of compliance.
Oh, okay, so you did. I wonder what else we need to do then? That should be sufficient, don't you think?
Do we need to send him an email just about that? He might have missed it with two things in the same email.
Maybe.
Um, well, do you wanna, are you gonna send an email about the two signs that we just approved?
I'll send the letter, scratch Ron's name, oh, my name.
Okay, all right, good. So maybe you can.
Can you also ask him to enforce that?
Yep.
Yep, whatever, whatever the language is that he's looking for that we're not giving him.
We, we, we owe him language? What do we owe him?
Well, to ask him to go and enforce the lighting being out of compliance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we can cite two different things. We can cite the style of fixture that they've mounted on the wall as replacement, and we could say, hey, prove that it's less than two looms at the edge of the property line.
Right.
Yeah.
Lumens. At the edge of the property line.
Yeah.
Or you could just say, we don't believe they're in compliance with the agreement, man, you can.
Can you, can you go look?
And you can, yeah, he can, that himself.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll send the email.
Awesome, thank you. And while he's up there, do we wanna ask about the BJ's sign that we know we didn't approve, or we're gonna take one thing at a time?
Probably one thing at a time.
Okay.
Okay. Got a few more minutes before we have to talk about the Center Village.
Um, I can give you news about, just new, little news.
Okay.
Meredith has agreed, Meredith Harris from, uh, Economic Development Committee in Marlboro, she's the director. This, um, has agreed to meet with Thomas and I Thursday afternoon at one. I emailed Thomas and said, I hope he feels better by then.
Oh.
Um, let me know. If he doesn't feel up to it, is anyone else around that wants to? I, I, we've been putting this off, so I hesitant to go too much longer. We really do have to think about language for the zoning, um, modifications for annual town meeting. Kristen gave us permission to get in touch with town council. I sent town council the development agreement and the zoning, and I'm gonna send her the, uh, the list of uses that Marlboro has agreed to. Um, so she's up to speed on that, and then based on the conversation with Meredith, we can give town council some more input about what we, what our concerns are in regard to the relationship between the overlay district and what Marlboro's done for zoning modifications to the Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Meredith's last name again?
Harris.
Harris. What, what's her title?
Director of Economic Development. For Marlboro, or Economic Development. Yeah, it's dir- director. I think.
Oh, she's Marlboro, not Hudson.
Yeah, she's Marlboro, cause the mall's Marlboro. Marlboro.
This isn't the, the project that coordinate Hudson, right?
Marlboro Economic, she's the Executive Director of the Marlboro Economic Development Corporation. And she's sat in on, in the past, on a couple mall meetings when we met over there with um, Jill Kelly and Liz Kelly, excuse me, Liz Kelly, who's the manager and Matt Vader, they're the guy that met with us, um, who was the proponent for, well, the the firm that they hired to help them coordinate their effort to work on marketing and rezoning. Now they've let go of that group, so I it'd be interesting to see who is participating now, um.
Yeah, do we know if either one of those two people are still in their roles?
Matt's gone, Liz is still there, um. So, I'll, I'll, I'll be able to, I'll send you news before the next meeting, so you're up to speed.
By the time they put their pickleball courts in, it's gonna, the bad is going to have gone out, moved on.
I told you, they're not putting pickleball courts over there. They got a brand new facility over at the airport, yeah.
They're gonna do a swimming pool there instead.
That, for me, that would be even better.
That's what Thomas wants, so.
Yeah, I think that would be awesome.
All that bleach they're gonna put into our air, in our nice clean air.
They're gonna filter it out.
So that's the news about that.
Cool. So, is this meeting in person or virtual?
I'm gonna go over and meet her.
All right. Yeah, Tuesday will be, and I won't be able to make it.
Thursday.
Oh, Thursday?
Yeah.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, a week from Thursday. This Thursday?
One o'clock.
I will, I'll be in Pennsylvania. That won't work.
No.
Sadly, I will be at my desk in Sudbury.
Get you excused if you want.
I am, actually, I, I, uh, am leaving early tomorrow to attend the CMR PC meeting tomorrow. What's it, Hazard Mitigation?
M V P.
Yeah.
So, Vulnerability Preparedness, or is it this Hazard Mitigate, yeah, whatever.
I think it's Hazard Mitigation, yeah, so.
Why would we need that? There's never any kind of crisis that we need to deal with like that.
Right?
The dams, the dams.
Right, so, um, right, what's our next agenda item?
Next general item at eight o'clock is Center Village Planning.
So, he, here's, here's my, my thought. Um, there was a committee that was established to deal with the eighteen seventy Town Hall. And, and they were interested in getting that facility back to the point where it was prior to COVID, when they had a couple theater companies contradancing, you know, all that sort of stuff. Um, and, and that committee, over the last four months, five months or so, um, worked on creating a website that was a little more streamlined and exciting, and did a couple other things, begun to get some money dedicated to some improvements, um, interior-wise, painting, carpet, that sort of stuff, just to get it spruced up, so it becomes a little more, um, attractive as a venue for some things like, um, you know, some celebrations, let's say, um, instead of just wood turners. And, um.
Yeah, we love that building.
Yeah, and there's, there's a lot of good stuff happening, but there's, there's more opportunity there, um.
Sure.
And then the.
Yeah, it's definitely underutilized.
Yeah, and then the, so the Bullard House is, is, um, moving forward, they're in the process of interviewing individuals to help um, coordinate some of the, the project in terms of the foundation work. The eighteen seventy has some ARPA money and then some town meeting money that we voted on, independent of what the committee was working on. That's to deal with drainage that impacts Bullard and eighteen seventy and access up that driveway to get to the handicap parking and um, and then the, there were, the, the committee that was eighteen seventy put together a proposal for CPA funds that was gonna be utilized for um, upgrading the access to the front door, um, readjusting and realigning the, the granite steps, but creating to the right of the steps, a, a more handicap accessible pathway to get to that front door, so you wouldn't only be able to. Only be able to handicap access through the, the rear. There were some people that are mobile enough, so they could probably negotiate some modified access on the front, without having to go around to the back. And then you've got the complete streets issues that are trying to create sidewalks, and you've got the meeting house that's. You know, perhaps gonna entertain one of the sidewalk legs, you've got nineteen Carter continuing to expand program. You've got the library that wants to increase, um, and make some modifications there. And then you've got the meeting house, which is private, of course, but, you know, having trouble with its steeple. I, I'm not convinced that there's one forum for all these entities to communicate with one another, and as a result. I really think that there's a lot of energy being expended in different directions, and that if it was. Brought together on occasion, so that there was some communication between different disparate groups. It, it might serve us all well, and in the long run, I think we might more efficiently use the funds that are gonna get. Placed in support of particular library Bullard in eighteen seventy and Complete Streets, so. Uh, there, Kristen had called one meeting where, um, some representatives from some of those groups, like police and fire. Were there in eighteen seventy and the church, Bullard House. Um. And nineteen Carter, but, you know, I, I looked at, I mean, and that group met probably a couple months ago, and I thought, well. You know, maybe this is something that the planning board ought to just say, hey, you know, we would like to. Invite these people together to communicate with one another, maybe once in February, once in March, just. You know, outside of our meetings, perhaps, call an extra meeting and just say, hey, you know, do these groups. See if there's any interest in the part of those different groups, but. To some degree to help Kristen, um, cuz with budget and all this stuff, I think she's got a lot of stuff on her plate, and I thought. You know, if we were interested, we could offer this opportunity and say, we'd be happy to. Um. Draw people together and, and just see if we can stimulate some conversation and make sure that. All the voices are being heard, cuz I think there's some folks in the center of town that, that the store, or, you know, we've often talked about. What the ba- banks issues are, and in terms of sidewalk access, and you know, what's gonna happen with National Lumber, and, you know, just. Anyway. I thought.
Well, things to Tim too, there's the, we're knocking down the two ugly buildings, right?
Yep.
So what happens there, and then we got unanimous support for a huge LED sign that.
So it, it, there's just a, the center, there's a lot of focus, we did that Center Village study. Um, I, you know, I think. Maybe it's, maybe it's appropriate for the planning board to. Try to stimulate the conversation and the, and just say, hey, you know, we wanna call a forum, and if you're interested, let us know, and we'll. Set up a date in February, you know, after, maybe after the warrant closes, and people are, got a little breathing room for. Little bit of time. So I thought, I'll see what you guys think.
I think it's a good idea. That's the only way it's gonna be pulled together.
Right. Right, I, I agree that I think Kristen stretched too thin, and, um. You know, especially where we were the proponents of the Center Village study. There's some, you know, it, it makes sense for us to get involved.
Well, who knows, maybe Peg Stone would, would, uh, like to chime in as to whether she thinks. We'd be interfering, or whether she'd welcome our, our interference.
I've never known Peg to not chime.
She's sitting there in the audience evidently.
She is.
She hasn't raised her hand yet.
He has not, oh, there she is.
Yeah, good evening.
Go, just like to go on record, say that was total peer pressure there, Tim. No, absolutely, I think, uh, I think you guys could definitely help with the center, uh, center town planning. I know that, uh, Kristen and I got a little bit of a pushback, that people didn't know what was going on. Uh, then you had the whole kerfuffle with EV, which is somehow maybe being resurrected back through energy. But to have it at the town offices, so that could be part of your discussion as well.
Right.
Uh, don't have a timeframe on those buildings coming down, we still have to go through the whole RFP. Process. Um, I'm gonna guess maybe fall, I don't know. Um, but as far as I know, there's no plans to do anything with that small plot of land beyond probably. Plant grass and grow flowers, um. I know that, that fire and police would love a driveway out of there, but good luck dealing with Mass Department of. Transportation, because now you need to hook into their road, so I don't know.
Right.
Well, but you really wanna know, way back when the. Back in the dark ages, when we put that building in, there was supposed to be a curb cut at that location. And those buildings were supposed to be taken down, and, uh, the access was a straight shot to sixty-two. And there were members of the committee who happened to have affiliations and strong. Love of the fire department that nixed the. Funding, if you will, for that area and redeployed it to other.
Hmm.
Parts of the budget, and so at the end, when that was supposed to be done, there wasn't any money to be done with, so. The building and the access never came to fruition.
Hmm.
So, but it, it was approved by DOT.
I don't know if we, if it got that far, they got our approval for a curb cut. But there was, the architect had it drawn, everything was done, so it was the, the, you know, it was on the, on the plot plan and everything, so. I'm assuming that when they pulled whatever permit that they would have had to notify the state, um. Cuz they're essential facilities that at the time they, you know, talked about access and where things were going, and how it was gonna be done, and what have you. That was back when I was a baby on the baby committees.
We'll just have to make sure with our friends on Concom, don't know anybody there, uh, to make sure that there won't be any issues. Putting down a road, you know, coming up the hill to make sure that we're not like squishing any type of frog, or.
We'll, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
I, I, I might know a person who can help you look into that.
I appreciate that, thanks for the help.
So, if you want, I'll. I can draft a letter, I can chat with Kristen and let her know what we're talking about, and then the next time we meet, we can look at the letter and. And then send it out to the groups and parties that we think.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
What would you do, like a, a forum in the old town hall?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think you could. You know, we know what the interested parties are, and then you'd let the neighborhood know as well, and.
Right.
Um. And just let it initially be an opportunity for everybody to have as up-to-date a batch of information as we can give them. In regard to, you know, what's happening at all these different places, so people are aware, and then. If there's opportunity to cross-pollinate, we can begin to try to work on that, yeah. Good.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, thanks Peg.
And thank you for coming up with it.
Well, I mean, we, we did, we've, you know, we've started it a couple times, it's just, you know, it's. Time to take hold, it's our job, I guess, right, so.
It is our job, yeah.
Yeah. And it's fun, the center's fun, I mean, there's so much happening.
Awesome. Peg, do you wanna go back in the audience?
Yes, please.
Thanks Peg.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hang around, I'm, I'm interested about the whole ADU stuff, so.
First, you gotta hear all about the floodplain.
Yeah, exciting stuff.
Okay, so that's next on our agenda, is the floodplain bylaw update discussion.
So that I was actually interested in that, in the context of the hazard mitigation. Meeting tomorrow.
It's timely then.
Well, I'll tell you what's going on with the floodplain bylaw update.
I know. It isn't time yet, is it?
It is.
Oh, is it?
Eight fifteen, right?
One minute early, but yes, we can take it up.
So Carolyn and I are gonna go attend this MVP meeting. Is it MVP, or is it hazard mitigation?
I think it's hazard mitigation.
So the. The last time when we did an MVP deal, uh, forty or so people participated in the discussion and central mass coordinated. And then this time, it's a smaller group, still working with the commission. Um, but they've invited folks to participate, and. Um, they've got a matrix of projects, some of which involve floodplain stuff and the update to it, so we have this. This is timely, what Jay's gonna share with us, so.
Were there forty people from Berlin, or forty?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it was a lot of folks on the.
Yeah, cuz again, it's kind of the same thing, pulling all interested parties into one room.
Yeah. And the MVP plan is, um. I think the, the Center Village study that listed all those other studies. Um, includes the MVP plan, so if you go to the Center Village study, you can find a link to the MVP. Um.
Yeah, and having that was actually crucial in our getting the MVP grant for Mount Pisco.
Yeah.
So. The more.
Often the state is arguing that if, if a project isn't in some of your planning documents. They don't wanna fund it, you know, so, including, you know, casting as broad a net as we can. Pays off in the long run, cuz then we can cite it in the grant proposals, and it carries weight, you get extra points.
Yep, yep. And the more cross-pollinating of that kind of stuff you do, the better your opportunities are.
Yeah.
Alright, what do you got? Hmm?
No, it's eight sixteen, we're late getting started. Um, so I've been corresponding and had a meeting with Katie. From. DCR, something. Uh, what's happened is. There's FEMA kind of bylaws, um, and flood maps, and sometimes there are local town ones as well. It's kind of like the conservation bylaw, right? Um. FEMA has, is going through and updating the maps to better quality, you know, better, better data and more useful. And every time they do that, sometimes the lines move a little bit, and. Um, the towns have to kind of respond to that, and. So they're expecting, although not requiring, that almost every town update what's in their. Bylaw. Um.
Or, or create a bylaw.
Or create one, yeah.
In our case.
Cuz otherwise you just fall back on what FEMA, you know, the federal one, right? Um, so we, we do a bylaw. Um. She went through it, she's, they, this group she's got, they have a model. You can use, um. They will go look at your current bylaw and find the, you know, where it deviates from the model, which she did. It's not a lot, a couple things. Um. I mean, you have to update the map references to begin with, but you may have to do other things. But there are places, just like conservation bylaw, where the town can be a little bit more restrictive, have a higher bar than the. Federal or state regulations. We actually have at least one example of that in ours, not sure why, I think it may not have been intentional. And there's a group, they're putting together a document that has got a. Kind of a directory of things you can add to your bylaw to make it a little bit. Uh, more restrictive, and have it still be acceptable to the, uh, state when the, but, when our bylaws review.
Hmm.
And I don't have that yet, that was, that's late, that's, was supposed to come out a while ago. So. What we need to do is, is edit our bylaw, or, you know, either by starting with what they have. And making it, tailoring it to us, or taking what we have and making some changes to it, one or the other. Um, and the decisions we need to make are gonna be, are there any things we want to, uh, put a higher bar on than. What we're getting from the state. And right now, I can't really. Uh, comment on that, cuz I haven't got her list yet, but it's coming.
But your sense is that it's not too extensive. When we, when we've done this in the past, you know, the, the map gets changed, and then we make those. Long references to the maps, cuz we, well, we got four maps, right, that impact Berlin.
Maybe, you can go on, there, there's FEMA, uh, map interface, and then there's also the mass mapper that we use for everything else.
Yeah.
There's a layer there for, uh, flood, floodplains.
I know, and when we get the floodplain maps, we get multiple pieces because we. It's just like if you look at USGS maps for Berlin, you gotta buy four in order to get Berlin, because. They.
Well.
Because of the way they break up.
Okay, that maybe, the paper maps, maybe it's still that way, but I think. My database is all, is all stitched together, I believe.
Right.
And, you know, they're initially, the change that's going on now is the national watershed, so it's got very little impact on Berlin, it's off in the corner by Bor- of Clinton and.
Yeah.
But if you look at the maps, um. They show the hundred-year flood level, I mean, I could show it to you, and then they show the, um. Uh, three hundred year, like the point two percent. Level. Uh, which. I don't think we need to pay a lot of attention to, let's see if we can find it here. You first look at the map, it looks like half of Berlin's in a floodplain.
Yeah.
In the, yeah, here it is, right here. Layer. So this is the mass GIS data, and let me see if I can find the floodplain. In a funny place.
You know, years ago, the interesting thing was that, when you looked at the floodplain map, the only building in Berlin that was in the floodplain was that. Little piece of McCann's Ice Cream up. Across the railroad tracks, pl- you know, after, uh, Bridge Realty there. That building, that's on the other side.
The train wreck restaurant, which, no.
No, the building that's on the other side of the tracks after Bridge Realty. It's down.
The, the commercial building?
Yeah, that was, uh, well, it was Ice House, and then it was McCain, cuz that's logical, it was in the floodplain, cuz they were pollin. And then it was McCann's Ice Cream when I was growing up, um, they made ice cream there, um, and now it's. Some utility use, but.
Yeah, don't they do like airplane parts or something there?
Yeah, something bizarre, but it's a, the corner of that was in the floodplain, I recall the last time we were.
Right here, right?
But the, the town was.
Right where I'm showing.
We don't see anything yet.
No? Oh, I twitch the share button. Oh, I twitch the share button.
There you go.
Those fancy buttons.
Nice.
That's, well, this is where you're talking about, I believe.
Yeah.
Right, so the. The blue is the hundred year. Flood uh plane and the. Orange, which looks like it's everywhere, right? Is three hundred year, which. It's not. Uh, really regulated as much. We're gonna need to, uh, you need to have a boat to get across Wet Street here.
Yeah.
Maybe once at least a hundred years. And I think we were looking at this the other day. This is in the upper left here is where the Nashua River. Watershed is.
Yep.
In here.
Yep.
I think the uh, the one difference that I found between the state. Model and us is that under some conditions, I think it's the hundred year. It's a question of whether. We can locally determine whether uh a building plan, you know, can be allowed. In a hundred year floodplain or whether whether the owner has to hire a engineer and get stamped, you know, drawings.
Right.
For it, I think. We require that. I'm not sure whether that was intentional or not. What the reason for that was. I think I talked to Richard a little bit about it. I kind of get the impression. He likes the idea because then he doesn't have to make the decision, maybe, maybe he can, you know, doesn't have to become an expert on it.
There's, there's nothing wrong with requiring something to be engineered for a area that's already been designated. You're not, not, you're not disallowing it. You're just making it be engineered properly.
Right, and he said it'd be kind of in the two to four thousand dollar range probably to get someone to do that.
Is this ma- did you send this map around or is this?
This is online.
Oh, it's online?
Yeah, so if you use mass mapper.
I see mass GIS. Yeah.
If you go, there's a long list on the right hand side of different layers that you can.
Yes.
It's my favorite website.
Group down below. Oh, there it is there. See, it says FEMA National Floodwater Level Layer. That's what we're looking at now.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then you overlay the tax parcels. I'm just curious where, yeah, if you zoom in, yeah, I was trying to see where Sawyer Hill was.
Yep.
Up by me.
Oh.
If I'm underwater.
You're up here.
Yeah, I'm up.
Look at that. Oh, my goodness. Right in the middle.
But I got a little, we got. Oh, I'm I'm safe. Look at that. Property fields.
Yeah, just your your backyard. Don't put a shed on the property line in the back.
See, my house is all all set. I'm high and dry.
Well, do do understand that these are just estimates.
I know.
When people try to measure for the wetlands with this map, I'm like, mm, no.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's approximate that that's like ten feet away from Tom's house, so you know, plus or minus.
Right.
See how it was all sand and rock when I built the house? That would be pretty, pretty, it'll be pretty devastating. It'll be more than just my house that will be underwater.
Yeah, somebody told me the house I just sold was in a floodplain. I said, you gotta be crazy. But then there's that little turtle pond where the road water runoff is. Apparently a little corner.
I, I think that's actually a spring. Isn't that spring fed? The little pond?
Where the water goes from the drains.
Oh, God, I hope not.
I thought so, but I'm not sure. Down here, right? That little pond right there, that's manmade pond. I was told.
Hmm, there's lots of underground water in the center of town. My guess is it was wet and they dug a pond. To dry out the rest of the land. Cuz see that ri- the river that connects it to the wetlands over at the school, that's not manmade.
Okay.
It's straight enough to be manmade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz this all got changed, right? When the highway, the state came through and raised the elevation of this road a lot.
Sure. That's how the house end ended up so far down.
Yeah, exactly. I think that um. They were doing something with water that. Was not going where it normally would go once that happened.
So we just need to be certain that we tell Kristen that. We'd have an article on the warrant that would. Um, address floodplain modification language in the known in bylaw, right? Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, so you're waiting for sample language from your friend Katie?
Yeah, what it actually is gonna be is, uh, here's a list of stuff that you could. Incorporate in your local bylaw that's different than what's in the template.
Great.
And then from that point, we choose what we want. Kind of put it together and then get them, get her to review it. They have to review it before you present it to your voters and then it goes into say. Warrant article.
And she knows, she knows when the warrant closes? She's aware?
Yeah.
Okay.
I told her, yeah. And as far as who does that? You know, I mean, it could be me or it could be if we get the money for Jane. I suppose she could do it.
Yeah, we still haven't heard from EEA as to that. Um, they haven't heard any of that EEA money, which really surprised me. They thought they'd have heard two months ago, so. Um, I will, I have a meeting Thursday night, like I said, so I'll ask again if they've heard, but. Actually, Kristen will probably get the notice cuz it was an application from the town, so we'll know before the commission will, so.
Okay.
But that sounds good. That, it's nice that Katie's so responsive and uh. Willing to dissect what we've already got, so that's.
Yeah, no, she's great. Doing a good job. Yep.
Good job.
Okay.
Awesome.
Alrighty, are we all set with this?
Yep.
Moving along, we are going to talk about our favorite. Subject, this misguided ADU bylaw. No information from the state?
Well, so what's going on the state is they. They've had a bunch of hearings. Uh, there's little bits of information trickling out. A lot of towns are trying to figure out what they're gonna do, so they're coming up with all sorts of ideas. Right, I think. I think each town is gonna customize. Their bylaw, just like we do for our. Entire bylaw, right? And we'll have a bunch of choices to make. Um, there was a public comment period. Of about a month where you could submit questions or comments. And I was gonna do that, except that we hadn't really talked about them and I didn't wanna. Present anything that wasn't representing our combined. Opinions or questions, so I didn't do it. And the date, it was up until last Friday. So those comments. And questions. Are only going to affect the next revision of the bylaw. So what's coming out, what's been written and is coming out on February fifth? Is done. And then what I think is we're gonna see probably a series of revisions over time.
So what's the strategy for a town meeting?
I think we should. Uh, look at. The question, we should look at the various um. Uh, opportunities for us. To have a bylaw. That's locally different than the template. And maybe try to make some decisions around those. The one that I sent you, um, I, there was a bunch of notes in there about we have to decide on this or that or whatever. Right, I'm trying to find anything somebody puts forward as. Being different from what the state has specified so far and having us look at it, see if we want it. You know, one of the challenges is I talked to Richard for a while about this, that this weekend. This is kind of a really different impact in the cities than in the towns.
Sure.
And you can see how. It potentially could kind of get. What the governor wants, which is more relatively affordable housing in a town. You know, if the town is gonna welcome it, right? It's probably not gonna be large numbers. But if you look at the cities, like his example was. You're in a neighborhood in the city where there's very small building lots and you got a tiny little yard and your neighbors are all right next to you. And now all of a sudden you're allowed to, instead of having a tiny yard, put another building in.
Yeah.
How do your neighbors feel about that? By right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then with developers, you know, actually, Richard is pointing out. Essentially, this allows us, we never allowed duplexes, but this basically allows duplexes because you can build. Um, an eighteen hundred square foot. Or thirty whatever hundred square foot building have eighteen hundred of it as the primary and nine hundred as the accessory, you gotta duplex. By right.
I think one of the questions I have is, can we? Stipulate that the lot. That the ADU is built on has to remain in. The ownership of the occupant. I mean, that the occupant of the primary dwelling. Needs to be. An occupant. In order to. Build an ADU, or can you have absentee landlords build an ADUs?
Pretty sure that it does.
You can't restrict, yeah. I mean, that's still a question, I think.
I, are you sure? I know we couldn't. Um, I know the stipulation that they being, that the occupant of the ADU be related. Was no longer valid. But I do believe that you can. We should look into that.
I'm pretty sure you cannot. I think I've seen that come up already.
So. On Thursday. We'll. Accept. The. DLTA proposal to give Jane the money to start working with. The ten or a dozen towns on ADU language.
Okay.
And. You know, as as much or as little as we want her to help us. She'd be available. I mean, the money is voted on. Thursday, she can start working. Um, so. When we get to a stage where if we want her to participate in the discussion, um. I know she's there as a, as an aide if we want her.
That's good.
One thing I, I did go attend one of the online. Sessions that they had. And one thing that they definitely said is. If you're, if the existing house now. Would qualify as an ADU under all of the parameters, except that there's, it's not an accessory dwelling. You can't build a bigger house and have the small house now be the ADU.
Oh, is that right?
Yep. Yep, that, somebody specifically asked that question. So that.
Any new construction that's associated with the ADU bylaw has to be. Less than nine hundred square. Feet.
Right, but like if you have a small house on a big lot, if you have a, you know, eight hundred square foot house on a small lot. You can't then build a two thousand square foot house.
Yeah.
And have the existing house be the ADU.
Interesting.
Why would, that doesn't make sense.
That's because the, the. I, I.
I haven't seen that in the, in the state wording, but I'm gonna watch for that.
How many nine hundred square foot units do we have anyway? Twenty by forty, single story. The stand, the stand is a thousand square feet, the the original. The main part is twenty by thirty and the addition is twenty by twenty and it's. You know, that's a thousand.
I, I just saw on Facebook yesterday or today that there's a four hundred and eighty square foot. House for rent on Dudley Road.
Yeah, my daughter sent me that.
Yep. So, my, my, my guess, it's on the River Road side of Dudley, so my guess is that the lot's very small too. But that, you know.
I mean, there are certainly, but anyway.
Yeah.
That's a small hotel room, right?
It's a big hotel room in New York.
So. You know, that. If, if we can come up with language that's. The template. For the warrant closing. It's clear to me that. That there's gonna have to be some tweaking as town council looks at it and we get more information from the state and, you know, we. Um, go to a public hearing and have some further comments, so. I think as, as long as we've got the rough sketch, um. For the, whenever the warrant closes, the twenty third or fifth or whatever, I, we'd be in pretty good shape.
Yep.
And I, you know, you've got a good start there with the draft that you put together, so.
Yeah, and I was thinking we got a couple meetings where we, where the. Things that are questionable we can discuss.
Yeah. What are Peg's, Peg had five questions? Is that what you said?
Oh, yeah, let's look at that.
Let's look at Peg's questions and rip them apart.
Oh, she wants in on this.
Wow. Honestly, the only reason that I sent them is that a friend of mine is a building commissioner in another town and every time I run into her. She's like, what's Berlin doing? What's Berlin doing? I'm like, you know, there's a planning board meeting. Let me find out.
Here's, here's the thing that I had written from putting all this. Pieces together and embedded in this. Are the questions about. What we wanna do. Things, the, the main things um I found were like the stand at the end here.
Are you sharing yet?
Oh, I thought I was.
Press the share button. There you go.
This is the, this is the thing I sent around to you, so this is kind of the draft, right?
Right.
And um. Almost all of these are right from the state. There was a question about um. Shared or private driveways? I think we might have talked about that before. There was a town, it was one of the, one of the towns or cities wanted to require a shared driveway to limit curb cuts. And I think we had talked about our experience with shared driveways not being a positive one. And I talked to Fred about it. He didn't care about curb cuts and said. There's already a process for permitting. Curb cuts or access to the. Road, it's not formalized very well. And I think one of the things we should do this year is to help him um. Put something in writing about some restrictions on how, how you can access a town road. Cuz I don't think there's anything in writing. It's just a form, but it doesn't specify what the criteria are.
You know. On that subject, I guess, the, the shared driveway, common driveway, um. You know, we've. I know we've had one experience that was problematic and problematic in a big way. Are there a lot of examples of our having common driveways that are dysfunctional?
Well. Tom's father, who was police chief in Wayland, when I born, when I was growing up. Had one that was very much like ours and he concluded that the only way to resolve it was one of the people had to move out.
Yeah, and.
What's interesting though is. I, I believe if the shared driveway is. If the two units are, have a common owner, like if they're rentals.
Right.
That you're less likely to have unresolvable issues with the common driveway.
So what's our sense? Do we expect most, a, a number of the new ADUs to come about? So, what's our sense? Do we expect most, a, a number of the new ADUs to come about? As people with a rental unit. Decide that they're going to try to maximize the income from the lot. And, and they will go ahead and build an ADU in the backyard. With the notion of they're not living there. The tenant that's in there is going to have to just swallow the notion that there's now another dwelling unit on the lot. And it's more likely we're going to see ADUs in those situations than. A homeowner deciding that they want someone in their backyard consuming the area that their kids play on or that they. Go and have their barbecues on and stuff, is that?
I think that's an interesting question and. I, I think the, the benefit to someone who's trying to rent single families, which is very. Few in the, in, uh, in Massachusetts, well, in the country. Thirty something percent of single families are rented. And in Massachusetts, it's fourteen percent, it's half, and I think the reason is that. So expensive here.
Right.
Both because of supply and demand and because the building code is just so tough to meet, right? That it's very hard to rent and it's hard to get enough rent to make. Renting a single family economically attractive. And what's nice about this bylaw is. From, you know, I've been looking at the numbers and if you could, if you have a large enough lot that you can put an ADU. On a corner of the lot, like you can put the two buildings in, in a way that they don't really. They're not that close to each other, so they're almost independent, right? You can then. Get in, you can make the economics work because you can get more rent. Without an equivalent amount of additional expense. And you can start to get, uh, returns on your investment that are enough to make it worth doing it.
So then the, the next question is, are. Are most of the parcels in town that are not owner occupied that are? Single family rental units. Um, are those in the majority on substandard lots that existed, you know. Prior to a lot of our zoning changes. And, and as a result, they might not accommodate. The increase to the septic and, um, the addition of an ADU as easily as. The eighty thousand square foot lot that's got this single family house on it already, but is. Not as likely to be owned by someone that's an absentee landlord.
I think that's an important issue because I think that. I, I really don't know how many owners of single family homes. On full sized lots in Berlin. Are really going to want to have some unrelated person living in a. ADU on their property.
Yeah, I agree.
Interesting to see, you know, the, New Hampshire and California, the numbers have been low. It, it's just a wild card, I don't know. For, for the people that have rentals though, right? It is very attractive because. You know, many of these people are selling off their single families rentals now because it's, the economics don't work. This would be a way to preserve those. As far as the septic goes. You know, you have a choice, I think. You got a choice of reducing one bedroom in the primary house to make room for the ADU if it's only one bedroom. Or replacing or adding on to the existing. Uh, leaching field, right? So I look at some properties. Where it's typically, you know, a three family home typically has three trenches. Look at a typical leaching field, there's three trenches. Which would mean.
That's for like a three bedroom or?
For a three bedroom.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, approximately, that's what I see, so. If you were to add a one bedroom ADU, I'm thinking you could go add another trench. To the existing field, you know, if there's a little bit more room there. Uh, put in a tank next to the ADU. And have a fully compliant, you know. Nothing wrong with that, it's like you have, instead of a three bedroom home, you'd have a four bedroom home with a fully compliant. Um, septic system. Not sure, but you can do that, right?
Right, I mean, the interesting thing would be that. A large number of the units that are on those substandard lots have septic systems that are probably. Ancient. Um, and once you open the door. The port of health is going to be breathing down your neck in terms of bringing the whole system into compliance, even if you were just. Planning on adding one trench, so.
Yep.
That. That'll be interesting too. I wonder if the town clerk's office has got any sense as to. Which units, I mean, how many? We've always struggled with trying to figure out how many units in town are, I mean, how many rental. Units we've got, whether they're single family lots with a rental unit or, you know, an accessory or detached or in-law apartment. I wonder if.
Yeah, I think, I think Eloise has a pretty good idea and you know, that'd be really good information because. One of the potential benefits of this law. Is that all the kind of bootleg, um, ADUs. That are in town now. That nobody's talking about because they don't want to have, to get a new permit every five years, that's not necessarily going to be granted. And, you know, the whole variety of other. Issues, um, if tho, if those became legal. And we could encourage, I'm not sure how you encourage the owners. To make them visible. You would have the benefit of being able to, um, enforce some safety.
Right.
Issues, you know, making sure that there's suitable fire protection and. Building code compliance and all that kind of stuff.
Well, you know, that's similar to when we had the, the, um. What did we, we call it? The contractor, the. You know, when people, you end up with your. Residential lot being compliant for a. Um, a, a contractor, what do we call that?
Yeah, the home business.
Home business, right?
Yeah.
When we passed that. A number of people came in. That had gotten under the radar and wanted to bring their, their unit into compliance, so they. They could transfer it to somebody else down the road, you know, I mean, it was to their advantage and you're, you're right, this may work the same way.
Home based contracting business.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if you brought it into compliance, right, you'd be able to sell the house with an ADU.
Yeah.
Right. I think that's good, uh, because. There may be some that are dangerous, whatever.
Oh, I like that.
You know, and sanitary, whatever, you get a chance to have a little more control over it. As far as the, the example of the shared or private driveway. You know, the, the properties that I looked at that I think could accommodate an ADU really well without the two. Uh, residents really being that aware of each other. Would be way better off with sing, with separate driveways. Because you want to kind of put the properties at the, at the two ends of the lot, right? Separate them and then use landscaping in the middle and then, so you'd really want to have two separate driveways, so I don't, I don't see the benefit. Where we don't, we don't have many curbs, so the curb cuts is not such a big deal. Um, I'm not sure the benefit of requiring that and the state is not. Has not even addressed that issue so far.
Well, I, I think one thing we have to require is a driveway. To the, the other. Um, you know, instead of. Just letting someone create. You know. Just, just drive over the, just drive that direction long enough and you'll get there.
Five sixty D here, I, I don't think that was from the state, I think it was one of the towns. Put this in that the ADO driveway had, you know, that basically what you just said, Carolyn, that the.
Equal or better to than the primary, yeah.
So. They're allowed by right, but, but, but site plan approval can be required.
Under certain conditions, you cannot require it if it's basically an A and R, right?
Well, but if somebody wants to come in and. I mean, the, the driveway part is, would be part of site plan approval?
I don't know, because like I say, I think that was one of the towns. Inserted that. So I don't know.
I know, I almost.
Right, it, so. If you're putting, if you're creating an ADU in your, in your existing home. You know, quote unquote, in-law. Um, that wouldn't necessarily be an additional driveway, it wouldn't be an additional. Curb cut, it wouldn't be a shared driveway, it would just be part of the driveway that's already there.
Right. That's why, I, I, to me, it makes sense to have it not to specify to, to let. Assuming it's a conforming lot and it's basically A and R, you would not specify whether it had one driveway or two.
And, and I'd agree that you wouldn't specify, but to me, there's still site plan approval opportunity. As we create this bylaw. That would allow us to review what the proposal was, so that if the highway and police. Said, no, an, an additional curb cut on this site wouldn't be helpful. We could stipulate that you've got to live with the curb cut that you've already got.
Well, this, this is why I think, um, we should get Fred to put in writing.
Right.
Some requirements, you know, you have to be such a distance away from, um, an intersection. Uh, you have to not interfere with the. The, the water that runs alongside, side the road.
I mean, the, the curb cut responsibility is with select boards right now, um, they.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And.
Cause he said there was a form that's been around since the beginning of time.
Yep.
Right, my guess is they, that Fred.
Right, police and fire.
Right, but that Fred kind of, um, says, yeah, this curb cut's fine.
Police and fire weigh in as well.
Oh, do they?
I just think if.
That would make sense, yeah.
I think if we're going to impose that as a requirement, then we should have something in writing for people to look at to determine whether they're. How to be compliant. Right?
Yeah, and I think we could grab a hold of what they're already doing, um, because they've got guidelines and, and there's been. There's, I mean, in the town bylaw as opposed to the zoning bylaw, there's. There's language about ways in which you treat curb cuts, as I recall, so.
Uh, we should look at that because it probably should be in our bylaw, I, I would think.
I don't. I mean, we could reference the fact that, I don't know, as we want to take on responsibility for curb cut approval. But we, we could certainly be certain that we reference it and, and you're right, I mean, it's important probably to. Look at it holistically and decide whether. There's some additional modifications that could be made at the same time we evaluate this.
Yeah, okay. So this one, five seventy A here. I don't know whether I got this from the state template or not. I think it was, I think it was in the state. Uh, language. We have stuff in our bylaw too that talks about aesthetic.
Right.
That's right, we do, yep. So if that's going to be there, the question is, who reviews it? You know, how do you make a decision? Yes or no on a proposal? And how do you enforce it and what is it, right?
I mean, I, I assume that, that site plan approval, I don't know why I've got the, I, I mean, I, my sense was that. It's allowed by right. Um, you don't need a special permit, but you can require a site plan approval, which would throw it at the ZBA because they're the ones who handle. Site plan approval.
I'll go back and check if it's, if it's a fully conforming lot. I don't think that's required, but it might be. I think if it's non-conforming, it's going to end up going to site plan approval, it's going to, it's going to go to the ZBA. Right, so if you have a small lot. And you want to add an ADU, which is, my guess is going to be a lot of those, because I think. I think more of these are going to go into neighbors, neighborhoods that are already more dense.
Right.
Neighborhoods where there's already some duplexes.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's already some accessory apartments and. And so. I can see us getting applications. From a number of properties that don't meet particularly the, uh, eighty thousand square foot. Um, and two hundred feet of frontage. Requirements, and so those are going to go to the ZBA. And where's the guidance? That the ZBA uses to make decisions? Right?
Good.
And the other things here, which these are things I thought of is. What happens with? The real estate tax, you know, how do you value them? And right now, if it's a rental, we, we're supposed to be filling out these financial statements for the benefit of the assessors, which I don't know if anybody does that, but. You know. Still kind of trying to put together a list of. Of all the options we have that are. Um, restrictions that we can legally impose that we may, that we should decide whether we want them or not.
Do you know if anybody? Has approached Richard or anybody else about. Wanting to do this?
What do you mean wanting to do this?
Wanting to put in, uh, an ADU in, on their property already.
No one has gone to Richard, but in Hudson, I think. A couple of week, weeks ago, when I checked, they had seventeen applications so far.
Wow.
And I think what we should be thinking about. Probably, Tim, you were, you were asking, you know, who's going to take advantage of it? I think the thing we should be really aware of is when we look at the bylaw from. The eyes of a developer. What do you see? So. You know, Richard was pointing out that. We can be basically allowing duplexes, which we never have before.
Right.
Right, as long as one side's smaller.
Yeah.
Theoretically.
Do we now encourage developers come in and to build lots of duplexes somewhere, right? Because it really changes the equation. You, you got a town where you need, we have a minimum lot size and a minimum frontage. Which makes it hard to do anything other than a fairly high end, single family home, if you're doing new construction. Um, this may change that. And how do we, do we want that or not? And if we don't want it, how do we write? Language that. You know, only allows what we do want.
I mean, I, I, I would. You know, off the top of my head, I guess I'd welcome the opportunity to see. Somebody come in and. Add those extra units, it, they, they can't, what's your sense? They can't help but be. Small A affordable. Compared to trying to come in and, and buy a home. It, it's going to allow some people to live here that. Don't meet the big A affordable requirements and could never afford the eight hundred thousand dollar house. Isn't, isn't that our goal here?
Well, you know, I, when I wrote, I was writing the, the. I was writing some intent here, right? And as I thought about it, I felt like it. It provided here, it. Provides a bridge between large apartment buildings like we have down south end of town. And conventional single family homes. Right, so for your rental inventory. It gives you something, it's a transition between being a larger apartment complex and maybe, you know, you have children or whatever it is, you decide. You really don't like that environment anymore. This gets you one step closer to having a single family home.
And, but, I mean, don't you also think that some people who can't afford to live at, at River Bridge? At three thousand dollars a month. Would be able to fit into a nine hundred square foot ADU? I mean, is a nine hundred square foot ADU, they're not going to rent for. Three thousand a month, are they?
Well, a nine hundred foot unit at River Bridge is. It's under three, it's probably twenty eight hundred or somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Right, but you could, you could probably rent a small house for two thousand a month.
It might be more.
Yeah, I think a house, a whole house might be more, but if, if, if you've. If you're talking about somebody renting a nine hundred square foot unit behind their existing dwelling that they already live in. Or that someone else owns. I mean, why can't they rent it for twenty-two, you know, I mean, or. I mean, why can't they rent it for twenty two, you know, I mean, or twenty?
The if if the square footage is is not nine hundred, but it's less.
Yeah.
The one that Carolyn's talking about that was four seventy or something, right?
Right.
I think there's definitely a correlation between uh floor area and rent.
Yep.
Right, but that tiny one, what would they ask in eight hundred?
Well, that was weird.
I don't know. Or it was, it was, was it a weird, was it like eight eighty? Like, I seem to remember it being an odd number, but it was. Closer to a thousand than not.
Yeah, that's not, that's not market rate at all.
Yeah.
I can tell you, that's like half of market rate.
Yeah, but.
Something's.
Right?
It's also tiny, it's four hundred and something, yeah, it's it's.
Yeah.
It's like a single room almost.
Um, I'm just saying, yeah.
In the big picture. Um, the economics on. On these different properties, so. A single family, if you want to have a single family rental, you have to deal with all the issues of. You know, plowing and landscaping and the maintenance and all that stuff and the expenses. Um, it's just, even when you're getting thirty five hundred bucks a month, it's just not a great investment. And the way you. The way you make it, get a better investment is you get almost that same amount. For a unit in a two hundred and four unit apartment building like down the south end of town, where all those expenses get shared across two hundred and four units.
Yeah.
It's dramatic difference, right? So your return on investment seems to run with the number of units. Um, so this is going to be a little better because you've got two units on one property. But it's not going to be as economical as a unit in a, you know, ten fifteen twenty hundred unit apartment building.
I'm encouraged. I think we're. We're asking the right questions. We're going to gradually fill in the blanks and we're going to have something good to offer the town in May.
Right, um, I I will, I will admit that I have not looked at this document yet. I knew I had homework reading, but I forgot what it was, so I didn't do any. Um.
I get fine pegs questions too, so we make sure we look.
Yes, my my question is, is there anything in here about short term rentals?
Yes. They're excluded.
Okay. And how do we define short term rental?
Um, I think there's already.
I think there is state language.
Yeah, I think so. And I don't know, there's a time window and I'm not sure what it is.
It's a one month thing.
Is it a one month? Here's um pegs.
So anything less than a month is considered a short term rental?
Yeah. Public comments. Uh, yeah, the public public comment just closed and I think they've made clear that it's not going to affect. February fifth, so that's and we don't know when the date, when that's going to. Come out. Do we need a coffee talk? I think we definitely. Need to have enough time after we make our decision and get the bylaw together, maybe with more than one version so that we can definitely get one of them to pass. I think we should do a lot of work on um reaching out to our voters and getting them. Questions answered before.
Is the, are you concerned about this passing?
Yeah.
Really?
Really.
There's not much different that we're doing here other than what the state is already requiring. We're just coming into compliance with the state.
Well, but if if people don't like what the state is offering up.
Yeah.
They're not probably going to vote for what we're trying to modify, and I think it's an issue um. You know, like when we were working on thing for River Road. Um. In our meetings, you know, when we met, when we met in the eighteen seventy Town Hall and we were talking about. What good things could we do for the town in around housing? There was a lot of um interest in providing low cost housing for seniors and, you know, young families and. Workers in town and all that, but then as I was digging into it, when we were working on that River Road thing, I found. People may not vote for it because they don't want more kids in the school. They're not thrilled about adding to the population of the town or changing anything. You know, a lot of.
Right, but they were at that forum that we had. Uh, allowing ADUs was the number one thing that people said they were interested in.
I think the issue is they may not represent all the voters. It would be nice if that was.
Well. I no one thing represents all the voters, no matter what it is.
If you are worried that you have a single family next to someone else's single family and they're going to plunk an ADU between the two of you, you may not vote for it. Right? So that's why. We got to figure out what's going to be controversial and maybe we should have a version or be prepared to change on the floor. To take whatever the controversial part is out or something, I don't know.
Right.
I that's a dangerous game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you you're going to get mired in a whole bunch of, well, I think this should be in and that should be out and.
And and modify on the floor this and modify on the floor that and.
Worried Smithon on the floor.
By the time you're done, you've got a Frankenlaw.
Exactly.
Yeah, I. I think people will. Understand that. It's. It's a proactive way to try to deal with the. Economics of of living in this town and and I think that a lot of folks that go to town meeting will appreciate that.
Really?
I also think that. The the risk to Berlin. Is so much less than it is to any municipality with water and sewage that.
Yeah.
Right. I I mean, that's going to be huge. It's the septic.
The total number of units we'll see from this. You you know, is. I think that that when people take advantage of it, it's going to be to the betterment of the town. And and I think people at town meeting will generally appreciate that. And it doesn't seem to feel like an issue that is going to drive. You know, that extra two or three hundred people to town meeting to vote against it um.
Yeah.
And it's housing, so it only needs a majority, right?
Right.
It doesn't need the two thirds.
Yeah, I know a lot of people going through our college days and thereafter, single people who have. Lived, found little units like this.
Hmm.
Or attached or just detached from a larger building. Uh, and have been really happy living there.
And then there's, there's a lot of folks that find themselves right now in a situation where their kids are still living with them or their parents are. Going to be living with them and it just seems like an ideal opportunity to. Provide that option for families um. And then you've got that unit that. Once that dynamic has changed, you know, someone's passed away or the kids have left. You know, you've got this opportunity for some income um.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see what the hearings. Hold and like Peggy suggested, I mean, if we if we present this at a coffee talk even before we get to the public hearing part, um. You know, we begin to hear from folks too and get a sense of what the policy is, so.
I think we should have multiple coffee talks. I think we should really try to. Try not to end up with um no bylaw. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't, I I'm with Tim on that. I don't foresee. Huge resistance.
Really?
Um, yeah, I I it it, like I said, especially, you know, so you take that. The small lot that you're talking about, right? Let's say it's a three bedroom cape. It's on a not a two acre parcel. Because those were all built not on two acre parcels.
Right.
Um, the septic pro is if it's a house that's been in the same family for thirty years. Um, there's likelihood that the septic is not up to current standards. So you're talking a major investment to put. Uh. A house that's almost the same size as the one that's already there. On that lot.
Well, it has to be more than half.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right, so if it's a twelve hundred square foot cape, you're putting a six hundred square foot. ADU.
Exactly.
Um, and you're upgrading, you know, it it what, three hundred square foot, three hundred dollars a square foot these days? For new construction?
It's probably a two or three hundred thousand dollar investment is what Richard I was thinking.
Right, and that's a lot of money to ask. Of to to anticipate. That that's going to be something that a lot of people are going to do.
I think you're right. I think the people that have single family rentals. Who kind of struggle to make enough money to make it worthwhile in in this town.
Hmm.
Um.
Other than, how many people are that? Like, is that really a a thing that a lot of people have?
Hmm, well, there are a few of them and they could contribute. If this were all to work.
Yeah.
And, you know, most of their properties. Qualified and um they could contribute, you know, a dozen or something of these things. Maybe a little more.
Yeah.
Right.
Because there are a couple, you know, a couple of people that have close to ten. And a bunch of people that have one or a small number. And half or more of those people. Um, double the number of units, right? Um. I think the state would be happy. I don't know what they're expecting, but I think for a town of our size. I don't know how many more you can really expect.
Right.
You could bring a bunch of the ones that are in the closet out in the open.
I mean, the the thing, the thing about our town is that, you know, we're already. I mean, our real number is probably ten percent for our SHI. I mean, the fake number is sixteen or whatever, but. Um, we're doing. We're carrying our load and now we're looking for an opportunity to. Enhance that with units that won't show up on the SHI, but will be that small A affordable and any number that we gain at all is great, so.
Well, and and the, you know, we did talked about before about looking for. Senior workforce.
Yeah.
Entry level housing. It's a pretty nice step forward potentially.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
I like it. Good.
One of the, I mean, one of the things we got to figure out, though, is, as you were saying. Um, it's it's. It it. You know, somebody is likely not, does not have a conforming lot because the. Primary unit was probably built before the current zoning. Um. If if we require, if we do not allow by right. An ADU on a nonconforming lot, but we do allow it with a special permit. I think we've got to figure out some guidelines for the ZBA so that they're not left. Having someone show up on their doorstep and say, look, I got a, you know. Forty thousand square foot lot with fifty, you know, a hundred feet of frontage and I want to put an ADU on it. Can I have it? And they have no idea. How to make that decision.
Right. Well, I think as Peg points out, driving, you know, dragging the ZBA into this discussion as we proceed over the next month is. The next step too, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
And Sue and and uh. Lynn.
Lynn.
Obviously.
Obviously.
For quite a while anyway.
Yep.
Right.
Big question here, um. You do, one of the thing, the building inspectors actually have been really uh. Active, working on this. There's been a whole bunch of meetings. Of them.
Of them.
Groups. And there is this issue of. If you're going to allow an ADU in an existing building. Does it mean, need to be the same code as building a duplex?
Yeah.
Right? So fire separation.
And don't they already do that? I I know specifically of one new build. That had an in-law. Built as part of the new construction and they definitely had to. Um, do a firewall between the main house and the in-law.
Hmm.
The question is, is the state, is the state is saying you can't do this and you can't do that? Are they going to say you can't impose, you know, rules like that?
I would be shocked if they said that you, that there would be less fire code.
Yeah.
Hmm.
A that, that's not how we work here in Massachusetts.
So what that means, though, is say you have a large house, you got a six thousand square foot house. Because you had a lot of kids and now it's just the two of you. And you like to rent out a part of it. And you're going to make it an ADU, you now have to not just. Put a wall and separate off a bunch of rooms and put another kitchen. You have to provide fire, you know, firewall between the two units.
Yep, yes, yes, that's exactly what that means.
Yeah. Yep.
But I think they would have to do that in at least in Berlin now anyway.
Yeah.
Correct, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So we should be getting uh more. There are a ton of um workshops and webinars and. Um. New things to read, so. I think over the next month or two, while we're working on this, that we'll be getting more. Guidance and either have a template that we can start from or take the one we've got and. Um, modify it. Because we got, we have two more meetings right before we have to. Before the warrants close.
Yes.
One, two. Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Did you happen to look at this checklist link that Peg?
No, I just got that today. I'll take a look.
Yeah.
We've addressed a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yes, you have, and I appreciate it, and then, um, you know. If there's another town that's going first, it just might be wise to like figure out what poo sandwich they stepped in and how Berlin can avoid it.
Well, you never go first. You never buy the first model year of the car.
You know, the one of the presentations, one of the webinars I went to, there were, there were. Two or three builders that came in that showed some of the developments they were doing around like in Harvard and. Well, maybe, but they were doing the cottage communities that we've been talking about before. Where a lot of the units were kind of in the size range of these things we were talking about.
Yeah, it just, it just makes more sense with, you know, especially with an aging population. That doesn't necessar- isn't necessarily going to be in an over fifty five.
Yeah.
I mean, the unfortunate thing about this bylaw is that it doesn't allow you the option to. Require that a percentage of the of them, because it's hard to calculate that, be. Big A affordable, so that's where the benefit of trying to develop a cottage housing bylaw that would. Allow multiple units this size. Would then allow us to say twenty five percent are going to be. On the SHI, so.
Well, and that makes sense because it's going to be a developer with a lot of units where the scale, right? Whereas, but this is going to be a a small number. You just wouldn't be able to afford to do that. I mean, I think anybody's going to spend two or three hundred thousand dollars on an ADU and have to have it be. Capital A portable.
Well, and you know, when you were at that workshop with the. Forget the guy's name, but the one that's in Harvard and and uh. You know, I mean, if if we had a parcel of land that the town owned that we could say here and it had water. And we could say here and it had access to septic. And that's what that parcel at River Run offers. Um. Then you could, you could, you know, entice probably a builder to come in and say. Really? The land is available and we're not going to have to spend any money on that and the water's available and we're going to have to pay for that down the road, but we don't have to pay for it upfront. Except for getting it to the property, yes. And we could hitch up to River Bridge's septic, um, and we're going to have to pay as we go over time, but. I mean, it seems like it's still an opportunity there.
Good point. That's really a great location because of that, yeah.
And you could, you could squeeze ten, you know, thousand square foot, you know, nine hundred square foot units in there probably, or eight or something.
Yeah. It's true. Yep. Yeah, at the Harvard one, they were, they were clever in how they worked around the water and. Septic issues. They they put conventional. Septic systems in and kind of scattered, they grouped them, I think, and scattered them around.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I think what they did seemed to work pretty well, actually.
I bet you that guy, uh, we could probably drag him into a planning board meeting sometime. What? I can't remember.
He had a nice presentation, he could just do the same thing for us.
Yeah, and and uh. Put a carrot in front of him, yeah.
Yeah. Cool. Here we are.
That it?
Well, we have to adjourn at nine, so we don't have a lot of time left.
Good.
What do you mean, we have eleven and a half hours?
I move we adjourn.
A second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second and it's non-debatable, so I'll ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries the animus.